Okay, let's get going. Good evening. I'd like to call regular meeting of council to order Monday, October 19th, 2020. Approval of the agenda, please.
That the Monday, October 19th, 2020, regular council meeting agenda be adopted as presented?
Secondary Council Leeman, all in favor? Opposed, carried, thank you. Uh, adoption of the minutes, 3.1. Counselor Norbury?
That the September 8th, 2020, regular meeting of council minutes be adopted and presented?
Secondary Counsel Majinsky, all in favor? Opposed, carried, thank you. And October 5th, 2020, special meeting of council minutes, Counselor Norbury?
That the October 5th, 2020, special meeting of council minutes be adopted as presented?
Secondary Counsel Majinsky, all in favor? Opposed, carried, thank you. Any business arising from the minutes, Counsel? Counsel Kukalka?
So, page 10. So, is it just that Counsel Majinsky, if you can just explain, I was talking to St. Peter from the Mountain Bike Association, like, members, I'm sure they sit on your board or not, but there was some concern about the holdup from the pump truck. I see it was listed here in the meeting item 10. Can you explain the geotechnical assessment? Is that required by the district?
Yes, um, I had spoken with the intercity C O at the time, and they said that is a requirement because it is built on district property. Um, I also did talk to the Mountain Bike Association in regards to this, and they would like to come in as a delegation and give us an update on what their plans are for 2021 build season, as well as, um, if they can possibly get a variance on that as it is not, uh, going to disrupt the ground as much as anticipated as a building would be. Um, it will be some stripping of the top soil and stuff like that, and then there's gonna be a hard crush on top, so it's not a huge impact to the ground. And, yeah, that's, is that answer all your questions, Counsel Kukalka?
Go ahead, Counsel.
Yeah, no, I actually have a few more, just some of your comments that are... So, my understanding from the last delegation from the Mountain Bike Association, Counsel can answer me, but after a year, the pump truck becomes district property. Is that not correct? So, what I don't understand is why we would be asking, or the town, whether it's council or whatever, would be asking this group to go do a geotechnical assessment of something that's we own? Like, we're gonna own, the pump trucks is the district's tumble ridge, owned by the community, the district office. So, my concern there is, did we not go out and do a geotechnical assessment on raw land that's not even sold to anybody that we own, of the heavy industrial? Could that be explained to us? So, we can do that out there. It's not being sold, nobody's gonna be building a pump track out there, nobody's gonna be building a racecar track out there. Yet, we have an organization that wants to build a pump truck.
I'm sneaking myself on that one. Something there, I think, I got a conflict of interest on, so, thank you.
So, I guess my concern there is, if it's something that we're gonna own, we're not building an organization without grants and everything else, although I think we did give them a bit of grant pay. Why are we asking them to pay for a geotechnical assessment?
Good question, uh, can definitely follow up on that. Counsel Majinsky?
Yeah, no, it's definitely a concern of theirs as well because that was a cost that they weren't aware of when they came up with the build price and when they contacted the builders as well. So, they are scrambling right now to get funding for that. Be nice to have an answer for them, maybe, or as part of the delegation. They also did, uh, reach out to lawyers as well to see and go over the whole, um, contract between the district and the contract with the builder to make sure everything is in compliance there as well.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Thompson?
The geotechnical assessment was, uh, within the lease agreement that was signed, so that was part of the lease agreement.
Okay. Counselor Kukalka?
So, just on, how do we bring that back? I don't wanna say I don't know, but how do we bring that back for discussion? Because we actually have, own the pump truck, it's gonna be the district. Oh, it's, to me, it's gonna be Mr. Thompson's pump truck, after a year being built by a different society.
Yeah, in my opinion, this is definitely an oversight, I think, uh, being district land and being, us taking ownership of it afterwards. We should be responsible for that. Ms. Thompson, is there a way to adjust this?
The lease agreement that is currently in place, I'm, we can look at it and council can make amendments to it. I'm sure that we can, we'll have to look it up. I'll pull it out, make myself completely familiar with it, but if council does want to amend the lease agreement, they can. Um, it's just the precedent that could be created with it, but we'll, I'll find out more information.
Good.
Sorry for the questions. I did touch base with Counsel Majinsky, uh, earlier because I know he has some information. Do you understand, do you, do we know how long this lease is for? Is it a year lease since it's, you're giving it back to the district anyways? Or do you know if it's longer?
Uh, I'm not actually entirely sure on the entire lease timing. I think it's just the build date and of completions.
Thank you. Yeah, I believe that's correct. Okay, any other? Just a quick little... Oh, yeah, thank you.
Sorry.
Okay, uh, any other business arising from the minutes, Counsel? Staff, do you have any? Thank you. Um, our delegation is running a bit late, so we'll move on to the second agenda. Presentation, please. Counselor Kukalka?
On all items in October 19th, 2020, consent agenda be approved for information?
Secondary Counsel Leeman, all in favor? Opposed, carried, thank you. Counsel wish to lift any, Counsel, Counsel How?
7.2.
For discussion, Secondary Counsel Majinsky, all in favor? Opposed, carried, thank you. Counsel How?
So, I guess my question, uh, is to staff is, is how could we formulate something to, uh, to look into this? How could we, you know, look into the costs for somebody to carve off, be it a piece behind their property, to the side of their property, or wherever, have it surveyed properly, and then have it have value assessed to it so that somebody could purchase that from the district's tumble ridge? This particular piece of land is, uh, you know, you would, you would think that this place would, this piece would never get sold, uh, when it was a school. But now that it's not a school, uh, and that it's a, uh, connected to basically, it's the community garden is the closest thing to it. These folks have a, a great spot behind their property that they want to purchase. And we've looked at this in the past and we've beat it around quite a bit, and we've never, ever been able to come up with a way that we could either lease property belonging to the district to somebody or sell small slivers of property, uh, be it behind or in front of or side of people's property. Is there some way that staff could formulate something that we could, we could look at that?
Yeah, I believe, um, I was talking to Ms. Thompson, we looked at today, there, there was a report done a couple years ago, pretty, yeah, but we can certainly request another report. Ms. Thompson, did you want to comment on any of that?
So, there is a report, um, it was a fairly extensive report done a couple of years ago, I think two or three years ago, and it does have options for council to look at. Um, there is some concern within that report that it creates a precedent. Um, you know, so this piece is at the museum part of a school ground, but then you start looking into other places in the community where it would be part of a green space or, you know, it, it does create a precedence going forward that, you know, where do you go with it, or your lot's gonna be jagged and, you know, somebody wants and somebody doesn't. Um, but I know the, I had looked at the report and the survey cost per lot would be about $5,000, would be the minimum, minimum cost was $5,000 per lot for the survey. So, it would need, the report would need to be updated, but just from my cursory view of it, it was fairly extensive and the, and the costs were fairly high. So, there is, we can bring it forward again and update it, should council ask for it.
Okay, so, so how, could we go about doing something like that and, and looking at that? I mean, precedent has already been set in the district of Tumble Ridge. I can think of a, a few pieces of property, one in particular, a bearwalk that was sold to somebody in Tumble Ridge between, uh, on Fellers, between Fellers and Stebron. No, sorry, Fellers and piece for Creston. There was a bearwalk that was sold in there. So, precedent has already been set in the community, and I'm, and I'm sure there are others as well. Just, it'd be nice if we had a, a way, $5,000 does sound like a lot of money, but depending on how much land you're gonna get, then you have to pay for the value of the land as well. It, it may open it up, and I'm not saying every lot in town that's on green space or connected to a park or something like that is gonna be able to do this, but we should be able to review these on a one-off case, it's just like this one. I see no reason why this lot in particular, we couldn't do this. You know, it's not like they're asking to go all the way out to where the, um, uh, community garden is. They're asking for like eight feet behind their property, just to have a little bit more yard. Uh, I think that property built a garage in their backyard this previous summer as well. Uh, so, it's something that I've, I've talked about many, many times in here, we've never been able to kind of come up with it, and I know it has to be looked at in a one-off cases. I know we couldn't do a blanket thing where we just approve anybody that comes in because there would be, uh, certain restrictions and covenants and, and areas of sensitivity and, and stuff like that. But I, I think we should have a procedure in place, just the same as we do with garages. When somebody comes in to say, geez, I wanna make my garage a little bit bigger, and we look at them and we say, you know, is it good in that area? Is it gonna obstruct anybody's view? Is there any other concerns that any of your neighbors have? And, and, and have a procedure to do it. I think we can do it, and I think it's needed in Tumble Ridge.
Similar to a variance, yeah, that's interesting. Counsel Kukalka?
Yeah, so I guess just a question. Curious why names are blocked out on, on this one? It becomes a, it's in our open agenda. It's an opening letter to council, I mean, there's other people, other ones that have people's names on them? I mean, to me, if, if there's a reason, if it's legal or something, we shouldn't be discussing it on open address.
I, I was asking the same question to myself, actually, to, um, Ms. Thompson, why it was blocked out?
Because it is a potential land sale, um, so that falls under free information. Information and protection of privacy, legal land and labor usually is under there. So, because it is a potential land sale, it is blocked out.
Counsel Kukalka?
Okay, so, that's kind of what I thought when I looked it up today. But my concern is the addresses, or I can look them up right now. So, really, in trade discussion, it shouldn't have been enclosed if we were worried about it. Because their address, their physical address isn't a letter. And I can look up the owner of the land.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and to me, you can just see where that piece of land is, and I've talked to the homeowner that lived there anyways, and they have no problem with me coming, discussing it with them, but maybe in an agenda like this, they just don't want their name as a possibility, yeah, prevalent. So, for sure, if they wanna do some detective sleuthing, people can find out who it is, but it's not that easy.
Counsel Leeman?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm, I'm just wondering if a board of variance is an option for us? Because, I mean, other communities have a board, and then it's not up to council to decide. And, I mean, they, they go on a case-by-case scenario as well?
Interesting, interesting, yeah. We can definitely include that in the report. Counselor Norbury?
Thank you, Mayor. I think, I think Counsel How is on the right, um, idea, training track, wherever you wanna say it. And I think, uh, see, I'm not a huge fan of one-offs. Like, every time somebody wants to buy a parcel of land, has to come to us, we need to do variances, all that sort of stuff because it's, um, I think, cost prohibitive that way. We don't have to track it properly, but I think the best way to move forward with this is to have a blanket base, someone wants some property, this is the process that it's gonna take. If it's partially crown land, which is a, which I think is my concern, if this is crown land, we have to petition the crown, they have to pay, we have to do variances, we have to do notice, we have to, also, um, public hearings, and so on and so forth. There's, there's quite a bit of process, but if we can have a policy, so to speak, in place to allow people to come in and just go through the upper course of action and to minimize our time and the cost, I think we can. Big issue, because I don't think the whole community should have to pay for individuals, but I think this should be an option from all individuals in the district.
Counsel How?
Yeah, and again, I'm not suggesting that the taxpayer should burden any of this. This should all fall on whoever wants to purchase any piece of land, and that's the one-off that I'm talking about. If they wanna pay for their own surveyor, fine, but it has to come back to our council. I, I like the idea, Counsel Leeman, but I, I think it needs to come back to the council because we're the ones that are held responsible if somebody makes a bad decision. Uh, if, if somebody says, geez, you know, they, they got friends on the board or something happens, they can't be voted out. We can be voted out, right? So, to me, I think it has to come back to this council. Uh, we're put in this position for a reason, uh, you know, that, that we should have some knowledge of the community, that, that people have decided that they wanted us voted in here. Uh, and, and to me, that, really, that's the only way to do these, is a one-off because all of these are gonna be so, uh, particular. I think back about, uh, young kid there, uh, young kid, I shouldn't say that, just, anyway, it was 30-some odd years old, across from the grocery store, who came in and said, geez, I'd like to buy this piece of property. I've already put my fence up. He kind of put the cart ahead of the horse. But had he came in and said, listen, I just wanna make it a little bit wider, this is my plans, this is what it'll look like, and he's willing to pay the $5,000 to get it surveyed and give the district of Tumble Ridge $5,000 for the land, we increase the value of the land, we get more taxes back forever on that land. Not just once, forever, we get taxes on that land. And a lot of people are utilizing lots already, so I think it's an opportunity to offer something that we don't have in our community right now, which is larger lots.
Yeah, I agree with you. It's, uh, it's definitely been hot, hot topic the last few years. But I, I do think about, you know, trying to be cautious as well when, when you were dealing with the property owners that bought a property behind them for a second lot and then made the fence all the way around. You know, if, if the lot beside it was to sell, it wouldn't really match up. Dealing with these one-off variances, you run into problems like that too, so definitely wanna be cautious on, on having a board. Counsel How?
Yeah, and, and that, uh, what you described there was not a variance. That was kind of what Counselor Norbury was alluding to. Those were lots that anybody could buy, and there was no restrictions on what you could do with those lots besides, uh, what was done with it. And, and this gives us actually an opportunity to have a little bit more control over that type of situation. So, this is a little bit, uh, different so that we don't run into that. So, we can think about those types of things and other types of things that, that would be concerning for the community.
Yeah, as long as, uh, you would be in line of our OCP and developments, uh, plans, I don't see a problem. Definitely look forward to the report coming and, and the information as well. Counsel Majinsky?
Just curious if we have a policy in place for amalgamations? If that would fall under the same? Because that's what you're describing, was somebody buying a property behind them. That was a vacant land, and that's, they amalgamated to their property. So, I wonder if we have a policy in place for that and if this would fall under the same, uh, kind of work?
We can add that information to the report as well.
So, when, yeah, when you amalgamate, you don't go through the district of Tumble Ridge to amalgamate your lot? When, when you amalgamate, you go through the crown and you, and they let the district know that the amalgamation is taking place. Like, removing a lot line is a lot easier than installing a lot line. I've done it twice, so. I did it with industrial land and I did with my, uh, house as well.
That's good to know.
You don't need approval, you don't need approval to amalgamate land from the district tumble ridge.
Thank you. Any other discussion versus 7.2? Uh, thank you to this resident for the letter as well. Any other things lifted from the consent agenda? Counsel How?
I, so just so I'm clear, did, did we give a motion to staff to, to produce that report?
No, we did not.
Okay, so I'd like to put that motion forward, that we asked staff to produce that report and any other pertinent information that they feel is needed now along with that.
Secondary Counsel Leeman? Any other discussion? All in favor? Opposed, carried, thank you. Anything else from the consent agenda, Counsel, Counsel Kukalka?
Yeah, I'd like to bring 7.5 discussion.
Secondary Counsel Majinsky, all in favor? Opposed, carried. Counsel Kukalka?
Yeah, I believe Counsel Norbury sits on this committee. So, I signed this committee, uh, on my first term, I think it's a great group. It used to be, um, funded by the government, through government agencies, and now the district's done a a fee for service for three years and so on. I guess, like, my question would be to Counsel Norbury that sits on this, on this committee is, is when I see a committee that the taxpayers are doing a funding or, or supplying funds to them to run through a fee for service, and then at the very, very bottom, it says, suits the fundraising, we were able to provide sensory toys, equipment for the community center, child program, and a TR public library to share. We also needed funds to support TR library's virtual learning VR equipment. So, I'm just curious if that's one of their mandates? Because my concern there is, is being funded by the taxpayers and then they're raising funds through, and they do a lot of things, spaghetti dinner and stuff, but then they're taking those funds instead of using them to help offset their costs, they're donating it to other organizations. I think that's a concern, and I believe the, the VR equipment was actually in the budget through the library, through the district's tumble ridge.
Correct. Counselor Norbury?
Um, so, I, I can speak generally about the mandate of society. The society in years past has funded, uh, projects or individual programs for many years, even before us on other districts, so that is pretty common. And it's, one of its mandates is to provide assistance to organizations within the community to offer resources for the community to share. So, there are some items that are down at the children's center. A good example is, um, the Tea Tree Tales, and that's a kit that can be borrowed by any organization in the community that teaches about, um, what's it called, for sexual, uh, polity, whatever, issue with children. And it's, it doesn't go directly into the acts, but it's a great way for parents or teachers to discuss it without actually talking about the subject. And there are many other times we've done this for organizations. Normally, it's usually kept within the community center or Strong Start or the children's center because they're some more accessible places that people can come in and use them. Because on our board, there is a number of us, I wanna say anywhere from four to seven groups that are represented there, and we want them to be accessible by everyone.
Uh, VR equipment support, you know, so that, I shouldn't discuss that, okay? Counsel Kukalka, did I answer the question? Counsel Kukalka?
Yeah, I'd make a motion that we ask staff to contact the Tumble Ridge Society for Children's Needs and ask the question regards to Tumble Ridge Library, uh, virtual learning VR equipment, uh, funding to them. I know, but I mean...
Assistant, Counsel Leeman? Discussion, Counsel Kukalka?
And the reason I ask that is, I mean, I don't wanna put Counsel Norbury in a position that, I mean, obviously, I understand where he's going on. Apologize for asking that question directly to him, and I think it's fair that he answers that, probably. So, I think it should probably come from whoever the president is of the organization.
Okay. I'd like to, I'd like to step up for this.
Please.
Because if being more elaborate, it would be a conflict.
Correct. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Verren. Uh, being, uh, liaison for the library, I, I actually don't know or heard of any of this and what, what kind of funding they've gotten or support. So, I could also reach out as well if you'd be, uh, but if you wanna, uh, direct that towards staff to talk to the library head library.
So, uh, definitely look into on your end, but I think staff can, uh, contact the, uh, society. Counsel How?
Yeah, so, I'm just trying to think of this, like, I didn't really put this together till Counsel Kukalka mentioned it, but, um, you know, it's, it's an interesting thing where a society going ahead and doing something like this and spending the money, like, that we give them to run the society and then collecting other money and then putting it somewhere else into the community. In, in a sense, I mean, Counselor Norbury has to leave because he works for the library. It, it puts him in a conflict of interest. You know, especially if he votes to give this Tumble Ridge Children's Society needs the money to run for this year, and then they take money out of their budget and then give it to, you know, some other place where a counselor may be involved or something. And it's, it's a bit of a slippery slope, and I don't think this is something that, we certainly never anticipated that, that this would happen when you give them, I never thought that could happen, but it certainly can. And being in a small community, it's not hard to see that, uh, a perceived conflict of interest in, in things like this. So, uh, we need to, we need to think about this, and we need to make sure that our staff is, uh, following up on this type of thing and, and, and making sure that there aren't, uh, those, those types of things. Because this, this really puts Chris, uh, in a tough spot, Counsel Norbury in a tough spot, and through no fault of his own.
Possible. Any other discussion? Counsel Majinsky?
So, with the fee for service, are they extending this, or is this just an update for the?
Just an update.
Just a?
Counsel Kukalka?
Yeah, and the reason I asked, I mean, I don't even need a big report, I just, I mean, it's hard to get the information from somebody that sits on the, on the organization. Absolutely, I just, maybe there's a reason. I, I mean, my understanding, though, for the VR equipment was actually in the library's budget. But we funded it through the budget. So...
Yeah, no, definitely questions, the answer, Counsel Majinsky?
Yeah, maybe it might be a simple answer as they had a specific program for the kids, so, you know, it could be something to that, right?
Absolutely. Oh, this society is definitely focused on children's needs and, uh, it can be done in many different ways, for sure. Any other discussion? Okay, thank you. Can we grab?
Hold on, hold on.
Oh, my apologies. All in favor of the motion? Opposed, carried, thank you. Okay, anything else from the consent agenda, Counsel? Okay, moving on to new business, 9.1. Transport system for ski resorts. Report dated October 19th, 2020, prepared by Glouin K. Recreation Service Manager. Cost for implementing a system to transport residents to Powder King and Bear Mountain Ski Resorts each once a month during skiing season. Recommendation, please. Counsel Kukalka?
I'd like to move this for discussion.
Secondary Counsel Majinsky, all in favor? Opposed, carried, thank you.
Yeah, so I think it's a great report, thanks staff for, for viewing it, especially in tough times we are. I understand why their recommendation is to move for information with COVID. But I don't think we should decide this, like, when you look at the cost, I mean, that, that cost can be actually taken, brought back. It's like $30 a person ride the bus, if you can fill it going, going to Powder King. Um, the only other thing I would ask for, I guess, and I don't know what a motion until, I think they'll wait till COVID is over. I don't think we want a bus going to Powder King at half full, one, one person to a seat, and then one empty. I, I don't think it'd be feasible. But one thing we should be asking, I understand that they're willing to do, uh, group rates, but did we actually contact them to see if they would give us a different rate? So, I know other, uh, communities that send buses in there, are actually getting a different rate for, for ski passes because of COVID. No, no, I, I believe it's pre, pre-COVID. But the reason I say that is, we would order the passes, so, I mean, I'm not saying we'd order 20 for next week because we don't know how we're gonna sell, but we'd be able to let them know via an email that we've got 22 people coming. And the reason I say that is, we could actually do it as a whole thing, you ride and you're, and you're lifting. So, I just, I mean, I don't wanna lose sight of this, I think, you know, even Bear Mountain, again, I don't, I don't think the cost is... I mean, we have children that live in our community, I mean, I heard it last year, before COVID, uh, there's nothing for them to do in the wintertime. Not everybody plays hockey, and not everybody skates. Right, so really true, that's two sports we have in the wintertime. We have the sliding hill, the tumbler, and the house. This is another option, and it saves maybe the mom that doesn't feel comfortable driving on the road. So, I just don't know how we don't lose sight of this after COVID, because I don't think it's something I'd be prepared to do during COVID.
That was great information. Thank you very much to staff for it. Ms. Thompson, would you be able to comment on the rates?
I don't know the full details on the rates there. Um, under governance considerations, uh, you know, the, the one question is there is, will the cost of the bus be reduced? And the answer was no, that was a flat rate. Um, I don't know about checking in, in more rates at the ski hills either.
Counsel Kukalka?
Yeah, so the reason I ask, I say it when I was actually calling it, and I'm not saying no until this comes back. I don't wanna lose sight of this report, and other prices or the, the amounts could change, but I think we need to call them directly, or staff, to say what we're looking at implementing within the district tumble ridge. Every second, I mean, the idea when I brought this board was every second week. One week was to, uh, Powder King, the following weekend, it was, or the following Saturday was to Bear Mountain. So, every, every week, you're going somewhere, or people could. Well, I know, like I said, I've talked to some that they were doing it for the community, and they got a different rate because we're actually bringing people that maybe don't always go to Powder King. I think it's an option for our community, or some of our residents that don't drive, or some that don't like driving.
Absolutely. Counsel Majinsky?
Thank you, Mayor Verren, yeah. Uh, a lot of these resorts do school rates, uh, corporate rates, uh, and group rates. So, all we'd have to do is make an inquiry into that, and I think they will do something especially for us, being remote and getting, you know, either families or kids out from here. So, um, I know growing up in Dawson Creek, the school would do it every, every month. So I know growing up in Dawson Creek, the school would do it every, every month from, from the high school on the weekends or on the Fridays, right? So that was, it was a good option for us, you know?
Yeah, I'm just trying to think of possible corporate sponsorship. I remember seeing last agenda there, we had Coastal Gas Link offering some possible contribution to the community. It was quite surprising we didn't talk about that. Cause I think there's an opportunity that we can still possibly capitalize on. Ms. Thompson, in contact with Feather with Coastal Gas Link. Counselor Hall.
What about looking at one of our, our groups that we fund? I'm thinking like the youth center. When I was in high school, that's, that's the teen center used to organize it, used to take the, the buses or the vans from there at six o'clock in the morning, go to Powder King's ski for the day and then come back. And it was, you know, all the kids, what, $30 or $35 bucks and everything's covered, your ski pass and your whatever. You know, maybe we could look at something like that rather than the district taking it on. Like, I mean, we got like something in here, chaperones wages and overtime as for the Q P collective agreement. Not really looking to have a union employee go skiing for the day. And when we could have a community group do it, that might take some, some funds out of it for themselves. I think that's probably a better solution for us and it takes it out of our staff's hands as well. Gives it to a community group that needs to bring some money and so.
Yeah, no, I think it would be a, just to contact the, I'm sure, society. Counselor Norbert.
Counselor Hall brought up a big point there. Like maybe we don't need a 30 passenger school bus or, you know, a bus, maybe a 12 passenger van would be the trick. And I think, I think there's two in our community right now that aren't even being used, they're the same title. And then we have to have two go up.
Yeah, so I'm not looking like, again, I don't want to lose track of this, this report. It'll come back up when, you know, I mean, I don't need the time to do it. But again, I don't think we have staff going up to Chaperone. I definitely, I totally agree with Counselor Malzow, but that's not something I'm looking. And whether we ask the youth center or another society to receive part of it. But same, and the reason I say a bus, cause a lot of people have their own skis, their own snowboards. These vans don't have that. And I mean, a lot of people don't want to be, I guess it's just the schools, I won't say youth centers. There is a maximum amount of transport due to the inclusion of the half in the east. Right? So this is the same concept. I mean, obviously somebody could set up, they did it to lock again. Right? I mean, it was, it was pretty straightforward.
Yep.
So we're doing the same thing, I'm looking to see staff ride a bus all the way to Powder King and Bear Mountain.
Yeah, and I agree with you, Counselor, but I think we should be looking at this after. It doesn't seem feasible at this time with restrictions. Counselor Calca.
So how do we not lose track of it? Are we better off to have it added, do the alternate recommendation to have it in the 2020 operational budget for, for this discussion? And then we could pass it on to the 2022 budget? Like I said, it's alternate, I'm not saying to do it this year, but I just don't want to lose, like to me, staff to be great job on it. But I worked on it. There's probably some things that can be tweaked, I just don't want to lose. Oh, I'm getting older, I mean, when staff gets busy and council's busy, we can lose this and I think it's a great report by staff.
I think it'd be definitely that alternative.
If you would like, we can put it on the action items list and keep it bringing forward. If you would like that, we can do that.
Yeah. Do you want a motion?
Go ahead, have a motion for that? Uh, yeah.
Make a motion that we add the transportation, transportation system for ski resorts to our options. Summary report.
Secondaire Counselor Norbury, more discussion. All in favor? All is caring. Thank you. Days of discussion. Uh, nine point two. Daycare spaces funding application, recommendation, uh, report dated October 19th, 2020. From the director of community services, running an update on the status of this application. Recommendation, please. Counselor Norbury.
The council through this consent A, outlining the financial analysis executive summary to develop a scope of work for a standalone daycare preschool facility on district property located on green space behind aquatic center. And that council supports an application to be submitted to the B C government's Ministry of Children, Family Development for the childcare B C new spaces fund. And that council financially commits funding up to $1.5 million. The total project costs surpass the maximum potential funding amount of cumulating a product.
Do it, air it up.
Excuse me. Secondaire. Um, before we get to discussion, Ms. Thompson, can you give us a little summary of this? I know we deferred this till today, but if we were able to go over it and have a good look at all members give us a summary, that would be appreciated.
Okay, thank you. I spoke with Mr. Veal as well, he's unable to be here tonight. So I've, I've got a pretty good idea of where our costs are going on this. And, and we were able to go through what we had for the report last time. So the grant application is the end of the month and we can get up to $2.8 million. Uh, the project cost is coming in at an estimated $4.3 million, but these are class D costs. So they are quite high. If you look at them, we can see that there are contingencies of almost a million dollars that are currently built into it. Plus there is a, the secure outdoor play area of $450,000. So these are class D costs. And it's in order to hit the grant application, we're comfortable with these costs. But once we get into design, we will be able to look at reducing some of these areas and, and getting a better cost on them. So I don't know how much we can come down on the building, but there is some places where we would be able to bring the cost down such as the outdoor play space at that $450,000.
Thank you very much. Discussion. Counselor Norbury.
So when I'm looking at this project, a few things that I look at. First is value that the children's society has brought to the community and will continue to provide to the K P with a new building. So I think one thing we need to keep in focus is this value for our money. From what I understand, it'll be a doubling of daycare spaces available. With that, I think adds to our community in that we won't be losing potential professionals in our community that lack childcare spaces. I know specific examples of people that have high demand professions that are unable to work due to the lack of childcare in our community. You know, you know, example, there's nurses in our nursing crisis, they're, they're homeworking after their children. And thankfully we did not lose any teachers. As I know when a family of teachers moved to town, they were, they were potentially limited in only one, one of them working because they didn't have childcare. And because of the children's center, we now have two teachers in an area where we are still in high demand.
Counselor Hall.
Uh, so my question is, is the cost of the building alone is 4.3 million?
No, I don't believe so. I think it's the total project, Ms. Thompson.
So that is the cost of the total project for the building, the.
Playground outside.
Playground outside and the interior finishes too. With daycares, you're required to have X amount of space as well and so many washrooms. So this does include one kitchen, fully furnished and the washrooms that are required. So like, like I said, it is fairly big. The costs are class D, so we have options with it, but yes.
Counselor Hall. Okay, so when, when we talk about the total cost of, of the building, in previous attempts by the district of Tumbler Ridge to build stuff, costs don't get included. The paving, the concrete, the outside, the landscaping. A lot of this stuff gets lost in the cracks and then comes in at a million dollars, $900,000, $800,000 of additional costs that we have. So when I ask if it's 4.3 million total cost, that is going to include everything. The parking, the removal of the playgrounds that are in the current area, the geotechnical testing, all the stuff that we required is 4.3 million. Like we're not going to spend 4.3 million and then get the land and then say, and now we got to cover up for all the nails and the stuff. Ours, we got to put grass and topsoil and we got to beat the sidewalk out. We got to put daycare or handicap parking down here and, and then it just builds and builds and builds and builds. If the number is 4.3 that will never go over, that, that's what my question is.
Ms. Thompson? I think she did explain that it was costly, cost estimates are definitely high, there is contingencies in it as well. As far as the, oh, I do believe this is pretty, I assume that Ms. Thompson.
Yeah, as, you know, I have as much information as you do based on what the construction costs are on there. You know, it's, if any renovation is outside, right? So that would, would have, this, this project cost estimate had included all the renovations inside the recreation center as well. So all of that has been removed. So these are class D and they're saying with a building of 4,022 square feet, with this and that, this is what it should cost. So they are class D saying, these are the costs, right? So the more we get into the design and, and what we currently need, then we'll see the costs tighter. But right now it's like for 4,022 square foot daycare, this is what it should cost you. Then we can tighten them up as we get into full design. We don't know what the building's going to look like. We don't know what the, what council's going to want for a design as well, right? Do we, do we want it fancy? Do we want it fairly plain? So those are, at this point, class D, 4.3, we shouldn't go over. And we have a million in contingency, so I can't answer that, but I can say these are class D.
And I think a lot of it will come down to the design that we decide to choose on. Realistically, I think we need to work within our budget to incorporate all the costs for how much we receive for the possible grant. Counselor Hall.
So are we, if we get this grant, are we required to make the space available for 60 children? So for instance, if we get the grant for 2.8 and we go, geez, you know what? That building's too big and we don't want to spend the other 1.5 million. Let's just make it for 40 kids and we don't have to spend our 1.8 million. We'll just spend the 2.8 that the government gives. Are we allowed to do that for this grant?
Pretty sure it's going to depend on spaces that are, the entire grant program is, is dependent on creating new spaces. So we've, again, if we create 60 spaces, it has been at a cost of $45,000 per space. That's in the ballpark of what the government is looking for as far as cost estimates go for creating spaces. So we're definitely in the range. Counselor Hall.
And then my last question would be, if this were to come to fruition, we lose the 28 spaces that we have in the community center currently, right? We wouldn't have two operating daycares, right? Those 28 spaces get lost and go into this, this total of then 60. So then at that time, we give us the opportunity to possibly expand the gym and we'd be looking at a renovation on the gym of a probably substantial cost there as well. So with this building, it'll be maintained by our staff, our rec center staff. We'll heat it, we'll provide the power to it. Even though it's a standalone building, none of this will be taken care of by the child center, childcare center.
I don't believe so. I don't mean we'd be responsible for the utilities. Ms. Thompson, do you have more answer?
I would have to look into what our agreement is currently. I don't believe that they are responsible for any utility costs currently. And I don't think the expectation is that the society would take over the operation costs of a new building.
Discussion.
Counselor. Thank you, Mayor. Um, couple of things. Tumbler Ridge's track record on building structures is not exactly terrific. So, and you know, in regards to $450,000 for an outdoor playground space, I'm glad you said that's high because I would hope it was very high. And the thing is, I think we have to look at something that's going to be functional instead of building a palace. And I think, you know, I, I, it's a lot of, it's an awful lot of money to spend. And I realize we need daycare spaces. And it's, you know, if we do get the grant, I realize it's, you know, provincial money, but it's still a lot of money for the district to put in. And, you know, it's like Counselor Hall said, okay, it's up to 1.5. But what if it comes higher than all the rest of? I just, yeah, I think before we end up building any of this, we make sure that we know the exact costs and not end up in a fiasco like we have in the past.
Yeah, we have, the 4.2 or 4.3 is definitely a very broad when we look at this project. And the reason we needed to put in the motion that council will commit to this 1.5 extra funding is because the province needs that commitment from us through motion. Talking with Ms. Thompson earlier today, I don't think that we are going to need to use that 1.5. I believe through our design and cost estimates, I think we can build a 4,000 square foot building for 2.8. The cost of visitor service right around that, I believe, with all the extras. So, yeah. It's my opinion, I don't, we're going to have that financial commitment through motion, but I don't foresee us having to use it. Counselor Norbury.
Thank you, Mayor Verger. So I think this is a great opportunity for our staff to take a budget and see what they can do. They, they hear, I think, from a large portion of the council that cost is always an issue and it always is. You know, I remember like, I have a bit of history with this project because, you know, I've got, I'm very involved in the children's center. But, you know, tech came back with this original design for a standalone building in 2013 or 2014, I believe. And like, I would almost say like this, this outline of the building is the building that tech proposed. And it was, it was definitely not at this price that we are quoted here. I mean, things change. But, um, yeah, I think if, when we look at return on our investment, this is a sound investment. And like, we're going to put a lot of money in, but we're getting a lot back too, right? Like if we have to put up a maximum, which I certainly hope we don't, we're still going to get 4.3 for 1.5, right? We're going to get an additional 2.8, almost a doubling of our funds that we're going to put in. I think in terms of value, that's really the amount of value we can get.
Yeah, just so we're clear that this project cost is not equally any cost of the existing.
Thank you, Mayor Verger. You know, when the ministry came out and put out this funding stream, what community would not want to go after this? And I think by putting the, the financial commitment by a minister of the area district or a city or a town at this high amount, it weeds out a lot of communities that would potentially want to go for it. And this puts us into a more serious position by being able to put this money forward on our, you know, being able to showcase that we can actually afford to do this and that we're serious about it. Because of course everybody's going to apply for it if it's a free handout. But once you start putting in big dollars into it to back it, then you're not going to have as many people that are going to apply and be as serious about it. And I think this is one part of it where, yeah, we might, we probably won't even hit the million dollar. We might, we might not, but at least we're serious about it and we do see a need for it. And the province is going to hopefully see that, that we are serious about it as well.
Just a slight correction, I wouldn't consider any grant eventually or federally being free.
No.
Certainly pay enough taxes, all of us to, to apply for those grants for sure. Counselor Hall.
So what, what, is there any ability for companies to get in on this to decrease the amount of taxpayer funded money that has to go into this? For instance, it looks like to me, this building that we're going to build is going to cost us about $70,000 per space. That's what 4.3 comes out to be. Now that's not all our money, but that's, that's what the cost is. If we were just looking at the 1.5 million that we're putting in, you know, you're somewhere in the neighborhood of $25,000 per space. Would a company, let's say like Canuma or Tech, be able to secure their own childcare spaces within this facility? They still have to pay the cost of that, the family still has to pay for that child or the health center has to pay for that child or whatever. But would Canuma be able to come in and commit and say, we are going to put in a quarter million dollars into this building? If you can guarantee us four spots for our employees, for us to use for daycare, how we see fit? That would be in my mind, one fantastic way that we could possibly even make this better and bigger or decrease the amount of taxes that are being paid for by. better and bigger or decrease the amount of taxes that are being paid for by regular taxpayers that don't have children, that look at this and say, why are my tax dollars being spent towards building that I am not gonna get any use of? But this is a way for the employers to come in and say, Tech wants to get on board of this. If they ever think they're coming back here again, put $100,000 in, you get two childcare spaces guaranteed or or 50,000 or some some type of way we could figure it out to get to a threshold where we could get another million dollars into it. Is that legal to do? Is that okay?
It's it's possible, definitely. Ms. Thompson and I were talking about another corporate funder possibly through CDL as well. But Ms. Thompson, did you wanna comment on that?
Thank you. So, you know, I think there would be a way, I'm not sure, we have to look at the grant to see if we can stack with donations or with corporate funding. I would be very hesitant to say you're guaranteed four spaces because if those spaces aren't utilized, then we're not actually increasing our daycare, right? So if I was coming in and I had a child and it was like, oh, well, we can't fit you in because we have these four spots that are for a corporate funder, but then you're not also getting your monthly fees from them. So I would be very cautious to say you're guaranteed X amount of spots just because it may cause some hardship down the road for somebody else that doesn't that isn't employed at one of the corporate funders.
That would definitely be a relationship between the society and corporation that I don't know. Counselor Hough.
And and fair enough. I I understand where you're coming from. I think there could be a, you know, trying to work out the details right now is impossible, but there's no reason why you couldn't say, you know, Canuma, you have until September 1st to take your four spots. And if you don't use those four spots, they go back to the society to go to whoever they want. And, you know, this is just a way that we can get some more money out of corporate sponsorship rather than always coming from the taxpayer toll.
Absolutely possible. Counselor Hough.
Thank you, Mr. Yeah, so Ms. Thompson already made some of the comments I was gonna make. The other comment I'll make is just because as a taxpayer, we may not use something. We're here for the community. I'm a taxpayer. You know, I don't have children, but I mean, we're here for the community. Tumbler Ridge to me is such a strong family oriented community that we offer each other. We're all together, one big family here. So I I mean, I understand why we probably worked successful on our first application when we put no money out. So I think we have to put money. I think we have to have there whether it gets spent or we're able to reel back the budget amounts. But I thought so. Um, sorry. But I think it gives them an opportunity to cut the budget back if they need to. But I mean, I think we've we've tried this. I know I've talked to the ladies there with the grants. I know Counsel Currie has. I think we gotta do something and see if we can get that. I think it's an asset to our community, not just for the children or the society itself, but it's it's an asset for our community. I know before, other people brought up that Tech, Tech was willing to throw money into it. PRC was, all the mines were because childcare was so, they needed a bigger set. They needed more spaces for them, and this is a way to have it in case more mines come off recently. And back then, when those organizations were looking at putting money into it, I don't think they were looking for guaranteed spots. I think they were, you know, they were just knowing that it was an asset to get workers to come to town.
Absolutely.
I totally support your recommendation.
Thank you. Counsel Currie, did you have any comments?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Bertrand. Just going back to the inception of this this grant, this was one of the biggest priorities that our residents were were coming to council with right in the beginning of our, like, 2018. I think the daycare spaces, I think this this is a great financial investment for for Tumbler Ridge, and I'll be voting in favor of this recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Called a question, all in favor? Close. Thank you very much. Okay, our delegation has joined us. Mr. Rob Mackay regarding drainage issues at 44 Secunka Place. A verbal a verbal report from Mr. Mackay regarding drainage issues on his Secunka Place property attached to this agenda for background information on a related issue or excerpts in staff report dated March 23rd, which was included on the agenda of 2018, according to council. Mr. Mackay, welcome.
Thank you very much, and I appreciate you moving the agenda around to accommodate you.
Absolutely.
But also even more so for every single counselor that come over and took a look. It sure makes it a lot easier sitting here and having explained and having pictures and everything else when everyone has gone over and and know exactly what the the issue is. I did want to also mention, I mean, I I came here probably before 44 Secunka, but it really affects a lot more than that. There's a lot of people in the exact same position as I am. A little bit of the background here, I mean, this this was first starting to be looked at in 2002 by a geotechnical assessment that was conducted by AMAC at that time. Then it kind of went a little bit on the back burner until about 2012. At that time, Andrew Mitchell of Harder Associates, they had recently been taken over by J.C. Lavalin, and and but they kept they retained the name and I kind of had a little bit of a problem with that. A new J.C. or J.C. Lavalin was in there. But anyway, that was the reason why these guys kept the role. So, like I said, I focused on it, one issue, but also recognize that a lot of my neighbors are doing the same thing. My this this issue started for me shortly after I had purchased that home. And started noticing, well, I got a call from the manager saying that water is cascading down the back end. At that point in time, there was a window with a window well, the window well had filled up and it was coming into the basement, flowing down the driveway. And I called up Town Hall at that time and Mr. Clark came up, he came up, excuse me, and he took a look at it. And what had happened was it had it had reached the top of the burn and was cascading over the top. And everything was springtime. Everything was starting on that boost. So he didn't want to touch anything. And look, when I look at some of the reports from before that, it was obvious, I think that was the that was the, I think that was the kind of theme of the day, that there were, don't touch anything up there, you don't know what's gonna happen. So he let it go, but water kept coming down. He put pumps in there, pumping it out. And the next day, Lonnie Miller, who was the acting CIO at that time, he came up, took a look at it. Right away, he got a rubber tire buckle in the back of it up there and it cleaned it out. And within, say, 45 minutes, totally stopped. The water had been sent on its way down the down the path and and it was no more issues. It really didn't have another issue until probably a couple of years later when the exact incident happened. I'm trying to keep things some kind of glory here, but. Well, I did have an opportunity to talk to the previous owner and he, his story is exactly the same. What they used to do back then is they used to walk in around just this time of year, maybe a little prior to, with a rubber tire dozer or a rubber tire buckle. They had Kevin Keyes going up there and he would give it a bit of a clean out. And as long as that was being done, there was no issue. But then I think this 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 mindset that we better not touch anything, that came into effect because it never happened when I when I was the owner. It hadn't happened for a little bit before than that. So but as long as they were coming in, cleaning it out, there never was an issue there. So what I'd done to the house at that time, I had to replace all the drywall because it came in and it was all salted bottom. Baseboards, flooring, insulation, all had to be all had to be replaced. And it wasn't insurable because it's groundwater. So that's a it was a pretty pretty good hit. And this happened another couple of times and not as not as bad as the first time. So but I've also I've always had to put baseboards, check insulation, pull drywall just to check and make sure everything's good, repaint, reinvest painting and everything because it's becomes fairly expensive. So here we are again this year, we're still doing the same thing. And I know I did mention the house. It also just cascades down the driveway and it also goes underneath the pavement of the driveway. And then when it it freezes and then it actually bubbles up and creates like bubbles like, I think when you were there, we seen that, where it was actually almost like an apple pie where you got two slits there and you look at it and even here's this perfectly formed round sphere of ice that's forcing the drive, forcing the asphalt up. So that's the kind of stuff that I'm having to contend with, and it's become fairly expensive. So it's been a lot of money done, been put into the interior of the house, not only the renovations because of the water damage, but also just to, you know, to keep it up. But the exterior, it was pretty bad. The exterior is terrible, I know that. It's an old house, really never has been done. So at the end of about a couple of weeks ago, three weeks ago, I went and tried to get an appraisal, just what it would cost to do the siding. And prior to the siding, all the windows have to be replaced. That's something I fully intend to do in the spring. The only issue is, is if it keeps on, if this keeps on happening, I'm throwing good money after bad. I mean, it is an investment, it's something that's, but at the same time, I don't like the look of it. I would, I've always been kind of, I've always kind of been hesitant on that because of this issue. If this issue were cleared up, I would take care of that right away.
Absolutely. I appreciate you coming in today, Rob, and informing us about it. And thank you again for for taking us on a tour up there. Just one quick question for me. Is it is it strictly groundwater that you're dealing with through the melts or is there spring water at all that you noticed or is it just strictly groundwater?
Groundwater, yeah. Now, from the back end of that stream, the ditch, you can see that there is some spring water coming. There is absolutely no indication that that's coming through that ditch because as soon as as soon as the the overflow stops, I have no issues at the time.
Okay. Questions, Counsel? Counselor Hough.
Yeah, thanks, Rob, for coming in. Thanks for that, Terry. Thanks for reaching out and offering for us to come up and have a look at it. Can understand what you're talking about when you come into this delegation. A little easier than trying to understand it. I know we don't make decisions in delegations here, but this needs to be added to agenda for some discussion. I was up there, I believe there is some spring water issue. That's that back trench that Rob's talking about. We walked quite a ways back up, couldn't find what comes in. I don't know where we sit in regards to a property that's, it's four houses from from the property we're speaking about now. I think that needs to be looked at. I I believe staff was up there a couple of years ago or last summer or something, I think I think Robert said. So I just don't know how to add it, but we definitely need to bring it forward to have some chat about that and see if there's any any information from staff and from previous operation managers about what's going on up there.
From what I saw today, there's three reports, three consultants that have been hired since 2002. So about three reports there.
Counselor Hough. Could we push this into our closed agenda tonight to discuss?
Try to add it to it.
Yeah. I just, I think there are some issues in there that we need to talk about in in closed. My 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 opinion, when I looked at that with Mr. Mackay there, is that area looks like it's been cleaned up by the town previously and it needs to be done again. But we we need to have that some type of discussion around what that would entail. And I think that we need to at least discuss it in closed. And if I'm mistaken, then we can immediately rise and report. But I think it should be at least discussed in closed so as not to put ourselves in a bad situation.
I hope we can certainly try to add it. Any other discussion or questions? Thank you very much again for coming in, Rob, and you have our commitment. We'll certainly discuss this.
Yeah, sure, appreciate it. And I tell you, it was a little bit gratifying to hear some of the some of the suggestions of maybe how this could be to go forward and everything. It kind of made me look, there's a bright future, I think. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rob. Golf course access roads, recommendation. Council will direct staff to prepare a report that gives the cost breakdown to rebuild the golf course access road. Second, Counselina, discussion. I'll start off by, I think this is now that we have the boundary lines sorted out and we actually, I believe, own that road now, I think it's well beyond time to look at upgrading it. It's pretty rough. Golf course is definitely a main attraction for the region and trying to, first impression is a terrible road in my opinion. So I think we definitely need to at least get a report on what it's gonna cost and continue the discussion.
Counselor Hough. Yeah, I I think that that road has served its purpose. It did what it could do for as long as it could, cheaply built. And I honestly think it's becoming a safety issue at this point now. I think that there's been some close calls on that. There's not really access for pedestrians to walk down to that restaurant, you know, where we've changed the, it's not just a golf course anymore, you know, but there's a fantastic restaurant available down there. There's, you know, the sledding hill, there's viewpoint hiking trails, cross-country skiing. So it's, it may be time that we look at doing that as a proper road in the area, so.
Comments? Okay, called a question, all in favor? Close. Carrie, thank you. 9.4, CSA approved baler at the recycling facility, recommendations. Counselor Cal.
That we ask staff for a report in regards to baler at the recycling site not being CSA approved when purchased. What the route will be to have it CSA approved and the financial impact to have it CSA approved?
Second, Counselina, discussion. Counselor Hough.
Are we sure that it's not CSA approved?
Ms. Thompson.
It is CUL approved and when the inspector came in to give us the go ahead, he required CSA approval. So the it's ANSI and CL or ULC approved, but not CSA. So the inspector is requiring that.
Is that because the baler was came from the States?
Correct.
Counselor Hough.
So just out of curiosity, is the recycling program on hold at this point until we get this thing CSA approved or if we can get a CSA approved?
Ms. Thompson.
It is delayed for, I believe that we will have that inspection completed the 3rd of November. So we are delayed for a couple of weeks at this point. I would need a a full update from Mr. Veal, but I do believe we are pushed off for a couple of weeks because of that.
Counselor Hough, so is that in your mind, is that the only reason why recycling is delayed at this point is because of the baler?
Ms. Thompson.
We do also have the heat for the building. We are waiting for the boiler, I think. With with COVID, everything seems to be pushed off. We're not getting supply as quickly as what we would like. So I know the for sure that the the inspection for the CSA approval is our biggest delay at this time, and I'm not sure about the others, but I think we can still move forward once we have the CSA approval.
So, Ms. Thompson, we have an appointment booked to get this done. We're just asking staff for a report on it. Is that correct? Okay. Comments? Counselina.
Thank you, Mayor. So we're waiting for the boiler and do we have the bins?
Ms. Thompson.
I'm not sure. That was something I would have to confirm with Mr. Veal, and he wasn't able to attend. Thank you.
Counselor Jensen.
Yeah, bins are here in the yard there, so I think they're all there.
Not allowed to go count. Any other comments? Okay, called a question, all in favor? Close. Carrie, thank you. Schedule of meetings? Any issues there, counsel? Counselor Cal.
Strategic planning data set. I haven't really seen emails, I know there's been some conversation about it. My belief is, I know myself, it's very tough during the week, but the same aspect, I think every council should have the right to be here. If I can be here, obviously the evening one, I have no problem during the week, it's gonna be the one during the day. I'll try my best, but to take weekends from staff or to take weekends from council, I think is wrong. So I think if the days haven't worked best... weekends from council, I think is wrong. So I think if the days that work best for staff or council, that's the days we should use during the week. My personal opinion on that, we should be taking weekends away from staff as staff will be there. And is that not going to seem to overturn?
Yeah, no.
Stuff like that, right?
We can decide on a couple of dates. I believe it's November 4th and 5th. Is that correct, Ms. Thompson?
It is.
We were able to secure.
Touch.
Counselor Currie?
So I'm sorry, you're saying it's November 4th and 5th, correct?
4th and 5th. We have times, Ms. Thompson.
Ms. Torville and I will be sitting down or with a phone call with Mr. MacIntosh to figure out our exact timelines. But we do know it'll be the 4th and 5th so far and most likely council in the evening and staff during the day. Council in the evening and staff during the day for the strategic planning.
Counselor Cal?
So just confirming that the 5th will not be days for council as to the previous email? So my understanding was, my understanding was the first night was in the evening and then the next day was a full day?
Yeah, I actually had asked staff to see if we could do the full day on the Wednesday and possibly half day on the Thursday, but the details of it all, because Mr. MacIntosh leads with the staff as well prior to, I believe. So I believe the details have been worked out. But Ms. Thompson?
We'll be working out the details by the end of this week. We just, Ms. Torville was gone and I was gone. So we'll create a call with Mr. MacIntosh going forward here by middle of this week.
Thank you. Counselor Cal?
So yes, just a comment. I've sat in them a few times, been here six years. I believe your first one should be a half. If it's going to be the Wednesday, that should be the half evening. Instead of jumping full day right into eight hours, kind of in the overview, get to go home and think about it. You come back for your rolls. I think that works way better. And this, for me, that's just my personal opinion of seeing them or and being there.
Yep.
Do a full day the first day, show up second day.
Awesome. Those are details to be worked out. Anything else on scheduled meetings? Any other motions, anything? Sorry. Second. Just a quick question there. Any notice of motions? Okay, and Counselors' business? I'll start off. I had a few regional district meetings, a couple of community of the halls to discuss the new solar lease management strategy being developed at the regional district and should be ready in draft form to engage with all of Counsel until November 26th, I believe. Anything else? Counselors' business. Thank you, Counsel Norby, for the reports. Counsel Norby?
I'd just like to add one thing. And it's in my report, but I want to say it to the people watching at home, but it's in regards to the South Peace Health Services Society and the Poultries House. We're still working on construction. Unfortunately, there's delays. But we are still being able to offer support for our community in partnership with the George Dawson Inn. And then if somebody is in Dawson Creek for any sort of medical equipment, not just for the hospital, it could be for dental, it could be for eyes. You know, you have a meeting first thing in the morning, you don't want to drive eight o'clock at night. You can stay at the George Dawson Inn. They're generously partnering with us to give people the rate of $30 a night, which includes a continental breakfast. Let's just say a breakfast of sorts. I'm sorry, I'm not sure if it's continental or not. But I mean, it's $30 a night for people to stay. Yeah, if anybody has any questions or has any referrals, you know, send them my way or we can send them, I'll just send them along to our president so that people can take it back to them.
Oh, that's excellent. Great job by that society.
Yeah, so just on Counsel Norby's comments, maybe we should direct staff to throw that up on our Facebook page, the district's website. You know, just to make it known that this is available, you know, whether you put the president's contact number or the contact these people use. You know, they, I mean, they have a great job on their Facebook feed, our own website, you know, posters. I mean, it should be known. I mean, we do have people following about it.
Yeah, I would.
Windows here.
I completely agree with you. I think we do need to get that word out there. I would, I would be cautious though of the district providing that information. I think it would be most suited, if to say the South Peace Health Services Society could possibly coordinate with our district staff. Maybe that's something you can mention next week. Counsel Norby?
Yeah, I think Counsel Cal, it's a great suggestion. I'll put it back to the board that maybe we should come up with a poster or advertising scheme to let people know that this is available as, you know, it's not just Tumbler Ridge that can take advantage of the service. So thank you, Counsel Cal. I'll see what we can do quickly.
Any other Counselors' business? Okay. Question answered. Carrie, did Ms. Thompson, did you receive any questions?
We have not received any questions, Mike.
Thank you. Counsel Cal?
Yeah, I'm just wondering if you can let people, advise people again how that works, you know, if they have a question due to COVID or our gallery shut down. And here's one again, maybe staff can take on and some advertising on one thing. I mean, I get lots of questions. I get lots. You know, I don't know if people are aware that they can email our CIO or previous intern CIO?
Absolutely, yeah. No, this is certainly unprecedented times, given our limited amount or ability to have galleries. So if there is any questions, wish to direct to Counsel, you can certainly contact our CIO, 3cao@dtr.ca. And we can certainly try and bring those forward. Counselor Howe?
I see on the entrance to the chambers here, you're allowed to have 15 people in here. Are we able to possibly start opening it up to a limited amount of people to attend?
Yeah, absolutely. We can certainly coordinate that if you're still. I would assume if somebody would like to attend, they could also contact their CIO through emails on cao@dtr.ca. So I believe we're allowed 15 in the room. Is that correct, Ms. Thompson?
Yes, it is. Correct. Including Thompson.
Including Counsel. So depending on how much staff we have each night, I think we could fit a couple. Very interesting. Counsel Cal?
Yeah, so maybe we can do that. Again, advertising, maybe welcome our press back. Like, be, this comment, I mean, I know, I mean, no disrespect to John Ursula, when he originally was, I mean, he's picking a lot of it up off the fee. And maybe we should reach out and welcome him back into our chambers. There's lots of questions being asked. One just came up recently. That's our three welcome to Tumbler Ridge signs, right? Getting lots of, you know, phone calls, I'm not sure, emails, stuff like that. So, you know, here's an opportunity that we can get this information out and it's correct information. Instead of being, you know, I mean, myself can't remember exact cost in all three individually. You know, people have those questions. We did have open houses for them and all that stuff, but people forgot about that.
Thanks for bringing that forward. Okay, resolution to close. Oh, sorry, Ms. Thompson?
Can we have a short recess? We are going to be considering another item in closed. We have to find a piece of legislation to add to it. So if we can have a short recess just to confirm what piece of legislation that is, we'd appreciate it.
Absolutely. Ten minute recess, please.
Yeah, because I was trying to, I was trying to, I was trying to remember because I had previous. Yeah, sorry.
That's just a go. I'm not sure the answer is.
Yeah.